Hello Stan?
Welcome everybody. If you want to say the prayer, sir.
Everyone bow your head please. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come before you this evening, Father, just seeking your guidance and just asking you to impart your wisdom to us as we try to handle the business of this city. Father, just guide our thoughts, our actions, and our words. Just help us do everything in such a manner that it be beneficial to this city, its citizens, and bring honor and glory to you. We ask all this in Jesus' name, the only name that's worthy. Amen.
Amen.
Let the least sinless in the United States of America, the free and the bold, which stands one nation under God, in his name, liberty and justice for all.
Get a motion to call this meeting to order.
So move.
Motion is second.
Roll call.
Here.
Here. Three's here.
That large is here.
Four's here.
Six is here.
All right, just show Tim, uh, show Greg not here. All right. So let's move into public hearings. We have a public hearing on 316 East Fourth Street. Em, if you'd read that, please.
Sure. Notice of hearing was posted on subject property 316 East Fourth Street, Long Beach, Mississippi, on October 27th, 2025 by zoning enforcement officer Dale Stogner and mailed to Kevin Sawyer, 316 East Fourth Street, Long Beach, Mississippi, 39560. Notice was returned to sender on November 4th, 2025.
All right, can I get a motion to spread?
Motion to spread.
We got a motion. Second. We got a, who seconded it?
Jesse.
Jesse seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. What's the pleasure of the board?
Um, you want to see if anybody's here to speak.
Yeah, is anyone here to speak on 316 East Fourth? Anyone here? All right, no one being here? Uh, what would y'all, oh, what would y'all like to, uh, where would y'all like to go with it, board?
Uh, motion to close.
Second.
All right, we got a motion to close, we got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Mike, what motion y'all want?
Um, sorry, they're still passing the, the pictures around, sir.
Yep.
Mike, have you seen these pictures?
There you go. R in the front.
Yeah.
Yeah. R's been there a long, long time.
Is it, is, I didn't see the tag on it. Is it out of date as well?
Oh, Dale didn't report.
Okay, now, I just didn't know on top, so I'll let them finish looking at the... Want me to handle it?
I want to make a motion to adjudicate.
Second. We got a motion and a second to adjudicate. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one is, uh, 111 Buena Vista Drive.
Notice of hearing was posted on subject property 111 Buena Vista Drive, Long Beach, Mississippi, on October 24th, 2025 by zoning enforcement officer Dale Stogner and mailed to William Schultz, 8929 Little River Turnpike, Fairfax, Virginia, 22031.
Okay, can I get a motion to spread that across the minutes?
Motion.
Second. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, is anyone here to speak on the 111 Buena Vista Drive?
Okay, so it's that one.
Anyone in the audience? No one in the audience?
Motion to close.
Second.
We got a motion, second to close, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And to adjudicate?
Second.
We got a motion to adjudicate and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Yes, sir.
There is a gentleman, I believe, is going to cut that tomorrow. He has been in con, the owner has been in contact with Dale today. He actually, he's been in the hospital. He got out today. He had had it set up. So I'm, I'm almost 99% sure they're going to cut tomorrow.
Okay, good.
There's a gentleman out of Gulfport coming to cut it for him.
All right.
So I'll let y'all know via email.
Yeah, if you, if you notice they're, they're cleaning it?
Yep.
Then don't take any action.
Okay, no problem.
Is there a standard turnaround? Like, if we adjudicate, yeah, they have 10 days before we can adjudicate. Thank you.
Before we clean.
So, so there's, there's time.
It's time to clean.
Well, even if we adjudicate it now, and he does it, and we don't do anything, it's, we have a year that we can go back on the property if he doesn't, you know?
Maintain it.
If it happens again, we don't have to go through the process again.
All right, so that is, uh, all right, so we adjudicated it.
Yes, we're on to the third one.
Next one is 100 La Rosa Road.
Notice of hearing was posted on subject property 100 La Rosa Road, Long Beach, Mississippi, on October 27th, 2025 by zoning enforcement officer Dale Stogner and mailed to Sheila Ladner, 22154 Cameron Road, Kill, Mississippi, 39556.
Can I get a motion to spread that across the minutes?
Motion to spread.
Hold, 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 we got Donald, motion, who second?
Second.
Second, Timmy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Is there anyone here to talk about 100 La Rosa Drive for Ms. Sheila Ladner? No one's here. All right, can I get a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Second. We got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, I think on this, go ahead, board, what's, what's, what would y'all like to, uh?
Motion to adjudicate.
I think motion to adjudicate.
Well, I think she actually came in and did what we required. Did she finish?
But that, these pictures are as of the 18th.
Yeah, this is, this one right here is not her property. This is that one on the end.
Right, but...
But hers is done.
Well, let's, and, and...
Is that not right, Mike?
She has, she has cleaned her end.
And that's all she's required to do?
That's all she's required to do.
I don't think there's any action on this one.
I beg to differ. There's a pile of garbage at the door.
Correct, I was just fixing to get to that.
Okay.
That one, and then, uh, that is on her end.
Is that on hers?
Yes, that's closest to North Seal.
Okay.
Um, so if you want to put those two out.
Yeah, that's fine, there's two.
This is on the north side.
Yeah, now, that's, that's that other guy there.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's closer picture of that.
All right, so we got the, uh, motion to adjudicate. Uh, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Jim, I think, Mayor, I think that Mike had some...
Yeah, we found some where they were dumping. There's a few pictures there by the doors and around back. We found some debris. Uh, Dale had picked up some envelopes of where stuff was coming from a vape shop. We're not su, we know where it is, I can't remember exactly what address, but we, somebody's bringing their trash and dumping it there.
Yeah, I, I thought it was clean the other day.
It was. This just happened since the weekend.
Well, you know, and...
So we got some envelopes, and I'd like to see if maybe the police can help us identify who that was.
Okay.
But the property owner would still be responsible.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, it just happened. I didn't realize.
Right, yeah, they just dumped this.
Has anyone talked, like, I know that's behind the building, has anyone talked to Philip and Josie that live right there, that they have any surveillance cameras on their place that might catch that? Know who's going in there?
Mike, what, is that the stuff that's at the front door? That's piled up on the concrete?
Yes, yes.
And, and I would check with the tobacco shop across the street, because they've got cameras that go that way.
Yeah.
So we could, we could probably figure out accordingly what's...
I'll get, I'll get with the police and see if they can, but we do have some envelopes with an address.
They've dumped that more than once, this has happened several times.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to briefly clarify for the board, or with the position the board, I think, should be with this, um, this property at 100 La Rosa Road. This property's not only just a narrow building inspection matter, the conditions there touch several parts of our code, including weeds and overgrowth, junk and debris, and trash container requirements, and our slab and debris, debris structure ordinances, as well as the nuisance authority given to us under Mississippi Code Sections 211911 and 211920. The board's inspection is that this used to be treated as a full nuisance and derelict property case, so that the entire parcel is brought into compliance. And if the property falls back out of compliance within 12-month period, the city has clear authority to re-enter and address the nuisance again without having to start this process all over again.
All right, and Steve, can you, uh, talk a little bit to that?
Yeah, the, I understand what the alderman Jeffrey is suggesting, and, and he's not incorrect. The problem is there are different owners to the different pieces that constitute the entire parcel. So the process you're doing right now, adjudicating each parcel, will assemble, will essentially accomplish what he's saying. For the next year, we'll be able to go on any individual property or the property as a whole, um, and require them to clean it up and declare it as a nuisance. But, but I think, I think procedurally, given that there are separate owners for the different parcels, it's procedurally correct to, to have a hearing and give each property owner a chance to address that and then an adjudication if that's the case. But, but I agree that at that time, they can be treated as a whole for the purposes of requiring it to be cleaned.
Okay, so the adjudication...
They're different owners to the different parcels.
So if we adjudicate each section, it basically...
That's right, we adjudicate each section, then we, then we can...
Okay, what Joey's requiring is...
Enforce it as a whole against them all.
Can we not have something that says, I know to, when, like, even the major subdivisions, uh, with a condo, don't they have to maintain a HOA? Because how would you ensure a building like that, that touches another building? Like, for example, it's, it's listed as a condo. If you have a condo, uh, the owners own Sheet Rock Inn, and the HOA owns the exterior. How is that not the case for this building?
Uh, they're not, they're not all zoned or regulated that way, are they, Mike? Help, help me understand how they're...
There is actually something, Dale has found something in the deeds where how much of each part of the parking lot each one owns. I don't know that there's a common area. I don't know if it's referred to as common area, what you're talking about in condo development.
Right, because when you build a condo, I, I'm almost...
Have to have a common area.
Well, I'm almost positive also, doesn't it say something about, uh, you have to have an HOA?
What we do now, I think, I think that is true. But I don't know what was done...
That mention is not required.
Right, I'm saying, it's, this is classified as, if, correct me if I'm wrong, a condo, right?
Correct.
But I think it was done back in, way back, when, when, uh, those may not be requirements.
But the parking lot, for example, that Alderman Jeffrey has referenced too, it's actually individual ownership, I think, as opposed to one common area.
Own a, own a percentage of the parking lot.
Correct.
Yeah. So I don't know if there's any common area, I don't know, would you refer to that as common area? I don't know.
No, not if they've got separate percentage of ownership.
Yeah.
Um, it makes it very difficult to enforce when the whole thing is a mess.
It just seems like what we've been doing in the past has not worked. Uh, you know, and I'm trying to look at it at a, from a different perspective, and look at it as one parcel, as one entity. We're sick and tired of looking at, it's, when, when we look at it, we don't see condominiums, we don't see three owners. We see a derelict property that's pulling our city down. And that's why I wanted to bring this up. And, uh, maybe it's not the proper or the, the correct way to do it, but I think we have to do things differently.
Well, I think, I think the fact that they are all before this board tonight is a step in the direction of treating them all the same and uniformly, and at the same time, whereas before, we've had the Ladner property, then this property, then Allen, like, the Sheila Ladner property, she was brought before the municipal court.
Correct.
And found in violation of ordinances and faced contempt charges, and she made corrections. The problem is nothing happened to the adjacent parcels. If we get them all on the same schedule as you're doing tonight, it may be easier for the code office and the municipal court, if necessary, to enforce it.
Well, that's the intent, that's the intent here.
The intent, hopefully, is...
I'll make the motion to adjudicate.
Better than those things. I think we already...
Can we hold, oh, one, we got one comment, uh, if y'all don't mind, please, just state your name and address and all.
Also, I'm on behalf of the next person who...
The, the microphone.
Oh, you gotta talk in the microphone.
Being recorded as well.
Great, okay, can I sing?
I don't know, let's try.
You don't want that. You do not want that. So I'm here on behalf of the next unit, which is Riddick Family Trust on La Rosa.
Okay.
I understand it's been a frustration for everybody, including us, because we haven't had cooperation. But I have possibly good news, and I think it's going to happen. Um, there is, um, we are, in, in fact, the whole front, which is Sheila and my, my parent, my mother's, uh, three units, uh, are possibly going to be bought by one person, so that would help the situation in getting it all more uniform and fixed up. And, uh, the third person, I think, wants to sell as well, so it may end up being one owner soon.
Okay?
At least the two, the whole front, Sheila Ladner's and Riddick Family Trust, which would be the whole front, you know, looks, I can't say 100% because, you know, we're still negotiating a little bit.
I, I appreciate that.
But it's about to happen.
I appreciate that.
We've got more than one, by the way, thank you for whoever did the tour for the, um, city about some investments. Ever believe that helped?
Economic Development Commission.
Um, because I had a couple of, I mean, I've had more than one phone call from an investor wanting to buy the whole thing.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I'm hoping that happens. That's, that needs to happen, huh?
I said, let's keep our fingers crossed.
Yes, and, and it's getting, and, and I'm talking to Sheila, she's getting reasonable, so...
Well, that's encouraging, yeah.
I pray that the stars align, and, um, that this could happen.
Well, what we'll do is, uh, I think the way we'll move forward, we'll go through each, each one of them and adjudicate them, and then if you don't mind...
But I wanted to let y'all know that that's probably about to happen.
Well, we appreciate that.
Okay, and then you all come back up when you want to talk to me.
We appreciate that, and hopefully that'll occur, but understand that we are not going to keep going the way we've been going.
I don't blame you.
Okay.
No, I don't blame you at all.
Very good, thank you. We appreciate it.
And I wanted to follow up with you later.
Okay, sounds good.
To kind of discuss what's going on, so I'll need to get your, uh, name and phone number a little bit later, and we'll call you.
Yeah, so I'll wait until you call.
And thank you for coming tonight. Thank you very much, we appreciate you, thank you.
And, and correction, I said, uh, the development, that was, uh, Main Street. I, I was corrected for that. That did the tour.
Okay, so...
I want to give credit where it was due.
Okay, all right, so we, uh, we voted to adjudicate.
Yes, sir.
That's right, right there, she'll come up next. Okay, next one is, this is the 100, uh, La Rosa Road, uh, can you read the, the notes into the minutes, please?
Sure. Um, 100 La Rosa Road, assessed to the Riddick Family Trust. Notice of hearing was posted on subject property 100 La Rosa Road, Long Beach, Mississippi, on October 27th, 2025 by zoning enforcement officer Dale Stogner and mailed to the Riddick Family Trust, 4649 Prior Oak Drive, Pace, Florida, 32571-10, or 130.
All right, can I have a motion to spread those across the minutes?
Motion.
Second. We got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I think this is, I think this is now where, uh, is it, ma'am, is your name Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, I think this is where Ms. Lisa was looking to speak, because she's on our...
All right, yeah, so I mean, you, you've, we, unless you have something else to add, you can go ahead.
Well, the, what happened was, um, my sister-in-law in Florida was handling that, but since there's no rentals, I got a notice on November 6th, but she texted me and said, "By the way, we got, I got a phone call from the city." I had landed in Hawaii for my 33rd anniversary. Um, we were there for 10 days, and I, she told me on the 6th. So I said, "Well, we got 14 days, so as soon as we get back, we'll get it done." Well, anyway, I didn't, my son went by there today and saw it, that there was a meeting tonight, otherwise I wouldn't have realized. So for one thing, we need to talk to somebody changing the address. My mom lives next door to me, she's 94, she's the owner. Um, and so, we, we need to change that where her and I get the notice. Uh, but hopefully you won't, we won't be owners soon. Um, but second of all, I didn't get the notice, so that's why it wasn't done, and I'm sorry, and, um, you know, just wanted to let you know, we'll have it done by tomorrow.
All right, well, we appreciate you being here.
If you can give Mike a corrected address, that would be great.
Yeah, put your name, number, so we can follow up with you on that possible sale of that property too. Appreciate it.
Yeah, so, uh, I was going to see if anybody else wants to talk on that, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll make a motion to close.
All right, and then we'll move to adjudicate. Anybody else here want to speak on that particular piece of property?
Thank you.
All right, uh, can I get a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Second. Motion, who second?
Jesse.
Jesse, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adjudicate this property, but now that we have Ms. Lisa, I'm sorry, how do you pronounce your last name?
Karns.
Karns. Information that we give, uh, you and Mike time to meet with them and work through this, uh, before any, any work is set out and done.
All right, um, so we are going to adjudicate it. Did we get a, uh, first and second?
I have a, I made the motion, I hadn't gotten a second.
I got a second discussion. Uh, they still need to do the, like you said, go out there and do the cleaning that you need to do, but then we're going to follow up and discuss a little bit more.
Okay.
About the great possibility of it being sold.
All right, sounds good.
Great, thank you so much for coming tonight.
Can I leave now, or do I need to...
You're welcome to do whatever you want to do. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, let's see, the next one is 100, uh, La Rosa Road, Earl?
Shaddix.
Shaddix. Can you read that into the minutes, please?
Notice of hearing was posted on subject property 100 La Rosa Road, Long Beach, Mississippi, on October 27th, 2025 by zoning enforcement officer Dale Stogner and mailed to Earl Shaddix, 11593 Charlene Drive, Gulfport, Mississippi, 39503.
Can I get a motion to spread that across the minutes?
Motion.
Got a motion, Donald, second. Timmy, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, can I get a motion?
Anybody to speak?
Anybody here to speak on that particular piece of property? No one here? Can I get a motion to close the hearing?
Motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion to adjudicate? Got a motion to adjudicate?
Second.
We got a second? Now, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries? All right, let's see, public comments. I think we have a Long Beach Trust, is someone here?
That was, that was her, she's...
No, I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's on, uh, 612 North Wright Avenue. That was in the planning commission minutes.
In the planning commission minutes.
Okay, we'll take that one, that one. Is anybody here for that one? Okay, we'll let you talk when we get to the planning commission meeting minutes. All right, next one is, uh, do we have any announcements, presentations, or proclamations? I don't think we do. All right, uh...
I have an amendment.
Do we have amendments to the municipal docket?
I have one.
I have one as well.
Under, um, derelict properties, I'd like to add 307 Alexander Road.
Right.
And then, Mr. Mayor, uh, at the pleasure of the board, I'd like to table item number 10 under new business, the amendment and restatement of lease.
All right, table it?
Table it.
All right.
Or, or remove, um...
Which one is that?
Uh, number 10. Uh, let's, let's just table it.
All right, we're going to table number 10. Can I, uh, get a motion to table number 10?
I made the motion, I just need a second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, can I get a motion to approve the mayor and board of Alderman Minutes of November 4th?
So move.
Regular, any sec, hey, second, we got a motion?
I'll second.
We got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one is, uh, planning commission minutes of November 13th. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second, discussion?
Discussion. I have a couple items, uh, I would like to discuss. First and foremost, uh, upon approving, uh, just want to make it noted that the corrected, uh, last item, uh, was, it's, we had it, when it first came to us, it was approved, but it was actually tabled. Don't forget yet. Um, then, the, the discussion, uh, on the Pineville Road, Pineville and Beetline Road Quick Stop, um, the, the board approved the removal of the trees, and I'm fine with that. Um, I would just like to see, once the, uh, MDEQ approves, I believe they need an approval from us...
Anybody here from the, from that petition?
Yes, sir. How are you? If you could state your name and your address, just for the record.
Yes, sir, my name is Mawad Said, and, um, just moved down here, so I reside with my father over there off of Beeline.
Okay, so if I'm correct, you're, the, the tanks on the front of this property have been removed, where the gravel is?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then you're looking to move them east?
Southeast corner of the lot.
Southeast corner, okay. And you need an approval from us before you can go to the MDEQ? Is that, is that how I understand it?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. When they approve it, or they have to see your plan on the tanks, is this correct?
I've spoken to, uh, Mr. McCain over there at MDEQ.
Okay.
So he's going to go ahead and write a letter, uh, stating that there have been tanks there before, so there shouldn't be an issue with regards to putting tanks down on that property again. He said there shouldn't be any, any soil issues, you know, if there's, if there's already been tanks on that property, there should not be an issue with putting down new tanks.
Okay.
So.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Um, so, and I, so at some point in time, with the growth at that intersection, the city has in the past discussed putting a turning lane, east-west and north-south. So I, I do like the fact that they're not going back in the parking lot for future growth of the city and your development. Have you looked at possibly, have you looked at all other possibilities before coming and just saying, hey, this is where I want to put them? I mean, did you look at, possibly looking at north of the store as well? Or was there a reason that that could not be done?
So this was the, from our architect, that was the most, that was a proposed location for the tanks.
Okay.
We also have an issue with parking at the business.
But now?
We only have four parking spots at the business, Mr. Mayor. So with that being said, you know, you may have three employees there at a time, so that only makes space for one customer. So we're also looking to add parking as well.
All right, you, you.
Uh, he answered my questions.
All right, so I'm going to tell you, I'm not a big fan of cutting down oak trees, and we'll tell you that right now.
I, I feel the same way about it, Mr. Mayor.
I, I get it. On the west side of your store, there's plenty of room for additional parking. Have y'all looked at that?
On the west side, we can, that was proposed in the, I believe in the, in the site plan that I've submitted to you guys. We are planning to add parking over there, but even then, it, it just won't be adequate enough.
Okay.
Um, we also have an issue right now with delivery trucks. So God forbid, if I get a delivery truck and I get the gas truck at the same time, it's, it's going to be, it's, it's going to be a hazard.
So the main, the main thing you're really looking for tonight is not necessarily where the tanks go, but you want additional parking?
Not just the additional parking, sir, but also the tanks, yes, sir. So the tanks were proposed to go on that far corner of the lot. The architect did cite, he said they may be for safety, he doesn't want to put them directly under the pumps. He wants to put the tank a little bit away from it, so that's why he decided to put in the southeast corner of the lot.
The, I talked to MDEQ today.
Mr. McCain?
Yeah, they didn't say there was going to be any issues with putting them where they were, other than they'll be, like Donald said, they may be close to the easement that we're going to need to put the road in. I think it's a little bit further in.
Yes, sir.
So have you considered putting the tanks in the old location? And here's where I'm going at, because you've got, even underneath that side where the oak trees are, you still have room to put multiple parking spots over there without disturbing the trees. You can also put multiple parking places on the west side, that's right off of Beetline.
Yes, sir.
And if, if you, because what I want to make sure here tonight, I want you to succeed, but I also want to make sure we're doing our due diligence to save those trees.
Absolutely.
And I want to make sure, and it might be us kind of rethinking, because if there's any possibility we can save those trees, I want to try to do that. Those are nice oak trees, and I'd just like to relook at it and possibly find another location where you can win, trees can survive.
Well, I mean, that's what we want, you know, it's, absolutely.
Do you mind if we come out, before we go further with this, and I don't know the pleasure of the board, but I want to look at all possibilities before we make a decision?
I don't mind at all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I do, I do also want to state that, you know, the original proposal was to cut down seven trees. With the last meeting that we had, we were willing to, you know, just cut down the ones that are necessary, given that it doesn't, you know, given that we can still make the exits that we need to make out of the property.
Okay.
I have something to say. My concern, I get where you're coming from, but my concern still is, without us doing a full review of road upgrades, we don't know how much property we're going to take. So if we say, okay, you move these pumps back 10 feet, we still might be buying fuel tanks whenever we do go through and widen a road and still have to move them there. Without doing a full set of plans to see where the road will lay, there, there's no way of knowing how far back we would have to push them. This takes it completely out of the way.
And it takes out five trees.
It does, but it also prevents us from buying fuel tanks in the future.
So before we make that decision, and we may have to take David with us, Ball, if we're thinking about doing that expansion right there, I guess we're talking about a turning lane.
Well, it.
We need to see if, in fact, it does impede him putting the tanks back where they used to be. Because I'm not going to go on an assumption that it won't. I want to make sure, one way or the other, if it's not going to affect us doing that turning lane, I'd rather you put them back where they were, and let's see if we can work some parking arrangements for you and save some trees.
I mean, you know what, we, we definitely do want to save the trees, Mr. Mayor. But, you know, at the same time, we, we do, we do want to move forward with the project.
And we want you to.
There's several gas stations opening up. I think there's one that's proposed to open up on Pineville and Daughtry. And then you have one just opening up, probably not even half a mile away from us.
We don't, we don't have a shortage of gas stations in Long Beach, that's for sure.
No, not, not at all, not at all.
And I know you got to be competitive.
At the same time, we do need to be competitive.
Yes, you do.
The business still needs to survive, and putting in those fuel pumps is one of the ways that we plan on doing so.
I'd like some input, Mayor, if you don't mind. I, two, would like to save as many trees as we possibly can. However, I've heard it ad nauseam, sitting on this board for the last four and a half years, how we make it difficult for people to do business in Long Beach. We have a tree board who gave the recommendation that, to approve the trees to be removed. You asked for seven, they approved five. I recall when those gas tanks were buried near the corner right there, and frankly, it was a hazard to try to get in and out of there, because I'm old enough to remember putting gas in my tank. My opinion, and it's just my opinion, is the tree board approved it. I concur with the tree board's decision, and it's the pleasure of this board how we move in this direction.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman. And I would like to say that, to be honest with you, you know, I've done business in other states, and by far, Long Beach is my favorite place to do business.
We're glad you're here. This isn't about your business, it's just.
No, no, absolutely, yeah.
Some of us love oak trees, and some of them love business.
Absolutely.
We got to come to a happy medium, so they can both survive.
And I'll be honest with you, I love those oak trees. I love those oak trees as much as anybody. I know they're beautiful, they really are.
I can envision y'all putting tables out there and selling food.
I do want to point out, I got nine more oak trees in the back of the business, too, you know what I mean? So, we have so many of them. But, like I said, we, we are willing to, now, I, I have a question for the, for you guys. Now, the proposed turning lane, has that already been planned out?
It was just discussion, it was just discussion, due to the fact that we have a, it was during the last administration. It was discussed because of the neighborhood that's coming online to the west on Pineville of having over 300 homes. So the concern was the potential backup at that intersection. So it's not something that's been drawn, it's just a future possibility.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I, I'm not sitting here today telling you that you're getting ready to go through a court battle or anything like that. I'm just saying, that was the discussion, the fact that we're, by a coincidence, you're looking at replacing them elsewhere saves everybody, you know, in the long run.
Yes, sir.
So it's the pleasure of the board.
Okay. Well, but I, I think there's other things we have before we approve the minutes we have.
But if you don't, you know, if, if y'all don't mind, let's just take one look. You know, it's, like I said, it's going to be y'all's decision.
Well, I, I think, but.
It comes down to me, I don't want to hold them up. I said, he's wanting to move, he's wanting to move forward. I don't want to drag this out several more months.
Sure. But, but also, if, if we go back and you, we're reading the minutes, he has to bring in the approval first. So there is still one hurdle for us to look at, even upon approving tonight, we're not, we, we've learned our lesson from, what is the, where we clear-cut on Pineville.
Yeah, that, even with approval, they can't be removed until you have DEQ approval to move.
Correct. And this is a promise I made.
And we have to have a copy of that.
This is a promise I made to the board last week. You know, we don't plan on cutting down a single tree, you know, until we get approval that we can put those pumps there, you know, so.
All right, even more discussion on this particular subject. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And when, are we going to revisit this, or is it approved that?
Well, we have to, because it's in all the minutes, and we'll, at the end here, we'll be voting on it here in just a second.
You'll probably see me come out, and we'll, we'll take a look.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, so we have another person that wants to talk for the Long Beach Trust subdivision? Yeah, I didn't see your name. You can step up in, your name and address, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Marie Baker, and first I want to start off by apologizing to the board, because when we came Friday, I guess we were under the impression that because we came in a couple of weeks prior to that meeting, asking questions to figure out what we needed to do in order to make some things happen, because we didn't know what those answers were without asking the questions, that we were out of place, and I want to apologize for that. This property at 612 North Wright, we've had it for about five years. Right off the bat, a tenant moved in under owner finance. They were there for five years, and recently they left. They didn't do anything they were supposed to do prior while they were there. So after they were gone, we decided what would really be the best thing to do with this property. So I did some research in Long Beach, and instead of doing owner finance or lease with an option, I thought it would be best to Airbnb the two pieces of property. Well, right now it's just one. So we got a survey and had it divided into three, and that didn't seem to work. And then the second one seems to be about the only one that may have possibilities of dividing it into two. Now, the question, when we were here Friday, that if I understood correctly, the shed in the back, technically, it may have been a shed at one time, but the house was built in 1955, and since then, I found two advertisements over the last 20 years where that's an apartment, and I brought the pictures to show you, where somebody did, whether they did it right or got permission, I wouldn't know that. But I do know that if you was to go in there right now and look at it, these are, this is what it looks like on the inside, but it's filthy right now, because the last people that lived in it didn't take care of it. So the slab that's on the, that was in question said it had to be removed. We can remove that, that's not difficult to remove. Just the muscles would, would take to remove the slab. Now, there's a, three feet from the back of that, I call it a college, a cottage, and it may have been a shed at one time, but if you go in it, it looks like a cottage. And the backside, there's an alley, and it should be, the wall of the building should be 10 feet from that wall, and it's only three. So we would be asking for a variance on that, and we just got through cleaning up all that alley on our part of the property, all the way back to that lumber building that's there. So if it gets divided into these two parcels here, I would have to move the driveway to the other side on track one and just leave track two the way it is with the driveway where it's at now.
Well, so this, the whole thing, I think, was tabled?
I'm sorry?
I think you're.
It was tabled, yes.
Yeah, so you'll prob, you're going to have to come back before the planning commission with, and then it will come back to us again once, once they understand what you're looking for.
Okay, and so.
So, just to kind of explain, because they tabled, we still got it because we got their entire minutes. And what we're looking at is, we do see the request to separate them, and I understand you're saying it, it was an apartment. I think we've looked back. Mike, have you researched back and see if any permits were pulled?
Say as you can.
We'll, we'll look at them. But I think where we're coming off on face value is it's a non-conforming property as it stands right now, and then by separating it, we would be making two non-conforming properties.
Correct.
I mean, that, that's just what I'm looking at here, but I would, I would prefer that, that, Mike, will, has Bill been coming to the meetings?
Yes, he was at the meeting Thursday, and that's where we got that answer. It's a non-conforming situation as it is, and when they divided it into two, it's still two non-conforming pieces of property then.
And I don't think that's within our, if, if that's the case, I don't think that's within our purview to approve in, according to our ordinance.
Can create non-conforming properties out of what's there.
Right, were there any solutions offered?
If you materially, Alderman, if you materially change a non-conforming use that's grandfathered in, so to speak, if you materially change it, then it has to be brought up to the current code. You cannot create, as you suggested, two non-conforming, because it was one.
Right, Mayor.
If, if it materially changes it.
Okay, I have a question, because I'm, I'm missing something. When you say non-conforming, that, are you talking about the square footage in front of the buildings?
Variances.
Well.
What part is non-conforming, is I think what she's asking.
The multiple.
Dwellings?
Dwellings, and then the road frontage. Because am I looking at this correctly, that it's less than 75 on the second lot, Mike?
I think so, 74, correct.
No, that's, that's the degrees. That's what I was looking at there.
What, what, what would you suggest would have to be done to do that?
So, and here's the thing, ma'am, I, I don't want to misspeak, and, and that's why I would recommend you allowing the planning commission to look at this. The city does have on retainer a, a certified, what is Bill's?
Advisor.
Advisor on this, on suggestions on how we can approve it or how changes can be made. But I, I don't, at, at this time, I don't see anything that sticks out glaring to me that we could approve it tonight.
Alderman, Fraser, and also, and mayor and board, it also says in the amended last page, give applicant time to make engineer recommended approval. So just, she just, we just have to have our engineer go out there and see if there's a recommendation. If there is, there is. If there's not, there's not. We can't, we can't create two non-conforming pieces.
So how can I get a meeting with this planning commission?
Uh, the, Mike, what's the next planning commission?
Next Thursday, isn't it?
December the 11th.
The, December the 11th?
It's tabled.
And, and you're actually automatically going to be on it?
Okay.
So December the 11th at 5:30 here in this room.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And do you, would you like these back?
Yeah, if you don't need them. Brian, do you mind?
Thank you.
Any more discussion on the planning commission minutes?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the planning commission minutes as written.
Got a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one, can I have a motion to approve the docket of claims 111825?
Motion.
Motion, you got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Special event application for the Spring Festival of Bands, Long Beach High School, can I get a motion?
Motion to waive fees.
Got a motion, got a second to waive fees, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I recuse myself from that vote.
A little bit late? No, but, okay. All right, next one is a follow-up on the gateway phase two, Joel. You would state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Joel Kazlowski, 521 Ford Mitchell Road. Alderman, Mayor, just following up on the meeting that we had a month ago, where I brought to the board's attention regarding the third-party QC testing, where they were not E329 accredited. Today, I went and searched the CMEC, Ashto Resource, and MDOT Qualified Labs, and as of to date, Stevenson Consulting, or UES, is not accredited. Last meeting, it was said that they needed to bring evidence showing their accreditation, a date wasn't given. I did send an email asking if there was going to be a timeframe, didn't hear anything back, so that is why I'm here tonight. How long are we going to be giving Stevenson or UES, UES Consulting?
So Joel, can we, can we get your information, and then I want to set a timeframe on getting the results back by next board meeting?
I've got Joel's information I can share.
All right, so I appreciate what you're doing, and we will have you an answer by the next board meeting.
I printed out the CMEC, Ashto Resource, and MDOT Qualified Laboratories, as of to date.
Do you have that, Pete, what he's got?
Uh, that I don't have.
He says his contact.
Yeah, that's whatever.
He has his contact.
Yeah, let me, let me take this.
All as of today.
Okay, and I'm going to take this and give it to them for additional information.
Joel, I got, I got your phone number, what's your address?
What's my address?
52 what?
14.
5214.
And then the next meeting is February, I mean, good God, December the 2nd.
December 2nd.
Roger that.
You saying Hongkong County?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, next item is a letter of agreement. This is on the annexation contract.
Motion.
Got a motion?
Second with discussion.
Second with discussion.
Is Mr. Slaughter here tonight?
Is anyone here from the company?
No, I don't see him here. I guess my question is, Mr. Mayor, if in speaking with them, how much information will they be able to use from our previous advancements or, or previous meetings?
Right.
Hopefully that will keep the cost down?
They will, they'll update what we already have.
I know you've.
We've already talked to him about it.
With Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and so, okay, is there a?
Did they, are they?
I mean, I see the, 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 the prices, what they charge, but is there a not-to-exceed?
I don't think so, because it's all going to determine how much litigation it has to go through, whether it's heavily contested or lightly contested.
So, when we spoke, sorry, when we spoke to them, did they, were they willing to? What did they, about using the stuff, because I mean, that was only two or three years ago.
Yeah, the last time we met with them, they said they would take everything that they already had and just create updates. Just research and find out what needed to be updated to that.
They will do what they can do to.
So for full disclosure to the new board members, the mayor, and the audience, that was one of the reasons that we stopped the annexation last time, is because the bills were racking up, and we're still, we were still at the time trying to find money for the harbor, and, you know, couldn't, we couldn't afford to do both.
And we didn't know what was.
It's also a much wider.
These are two totally different annexations.
Sure, none of, but, but that one, no, they were split. We had them split into two, but I guess that's where I'm just trying to go, hey.
Well, so it's going to come down to.
Trying to learn from previous.
Yeah, and we've got to do this.
100% agree.
In the path of going forward, so, I mean, we're going to have to do it, so.
Okay.
Pleasure of the board. We got a motion?
And a second.
Second, any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one is to request advertisement for the school board trustee. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just want to make sure that we're posting these. We had an issue with advertisement last time. We want to make sure that we're posting it on all social media avenues.
So along that lines, I think I see a.
So I know, but.
But yeah, we need to make sure.
We had a lot of, we had a lot of, hey, we didn't, nobody knew about it, we got a lot of that, and so.
And the young lady who works for Gazeebo Gazette is here, and she's going to make sure that that's posted, am I correct? Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Good deal, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one is the disc golf course, Jesse?
Yeah, I met with, uh, Mike out here the other day with Ryan, and David met me out there on the site that's in question, out there inside the walking track off Daughtry. And kind of, if you look, he's brought, drawing, showing kind of the basic layout from the senior center, running south, how it starts at the one and goes to the basic layout, and there's actually some, they're not ironclad, you know, dimensions as far as the feet, because there's things to take in consideration when they start installing the baskets, as far as the shrubbery and the tree growth, the landscape that has to be considered. It may vary 10, 15 foot one way or the other to allow for the, the foliage there. But he came up and spoke with me before the meeting today, and they've actually got someone wanting to donate the signs, so that would take away the $750 that they were looking to get approved from the city to purchase signs. So basically, what we need to do at this point, I guess, is go ahead and get it approved, where we can move forward, so we can make the formal request to the county. can move forward, so we can make the formal request to the county to order the baskets. And, uh, they can't go forward with that until we approve to move forward. And then, uh, once his signs come in, we need to, uh, allow him to go in there and begin the installation. What'd you say, take, once everything arrives, what, two to three weeks to have everything done, so?
Is that in form of a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make, make a motion, we go ahead and prove this to move forward, so that we can, uh, go ahead and request to the county to order the baskets, and, uh, he can get the sign.
I'll second Jesse's motion.
Got a motion, a second, discussion. How much is it out, out of pocket for the city on this one?
Nothing now.
Nothing now?
We were going to be out of, out of pocket for the cost of the signs, and he's got someone wanting to donate that now, so...
Okay, good, good, good.
Good number.
Just the, just a small notation, because I believe we approved it last time with the seven-hundred-and-fifty, but, um, I just, before we do work out there, I just want to make sure that our engineers are, stay involved.
That's the reason when we met out there, I had David meet us out there too, because I want him in the loop on all this as well.
Perfect, that, that's just the way that we're going to keep ourselves out of trouble.
Got a motion, a second? Appreciate it. Got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
So at this point forward, who needs to make the motion, or the request to the county for the, for the baskets?
Well, do we need to do that in, uh, form of resolution? Wouldn't that...
Everything with the county, we ask for them to...
Yeah, every ti, it seems that every time we approve something, they send it back to us to, for resolution.
Yeah, they want a resolution form.
Can we add that to that, uh, motion to approve that, approve it, and...
Steve developing a resolution?
And send that. Now, so, have you ta, you've talked to the county already?
Bobby Trot's clear.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so, yeah, let's add, add a resolution in there, Steve, if that's appropriate to, uh, agreement between the city and the county.
Do we need to revote individually?
We can do a roll call.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thanks for not giving up.
Just wanted to make sure we got it all housekeeping done.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Mike, can I ask one question before you leave, about, uh, well, I guess you can't answer this question, we don't know a timeframe, once the county gives us the go-ahead, do we?
So, um, I have, um, a retailer for the baskets, um, he has them on hold, uh, it's going to take about four to six weeks to order. That's why I was kind of persistent on...
I got you, okay.
Getting them ordered.
Just curious.
And once they get in, it should only take two to three weeks, basically, uh, put the sleeve in the ground, concrete around it, and then, uh, I'll go out and do my, my thing.
Awesome, great, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, downtown revitalization grant, uh, what we wanted to do on this grant is, uh, down here at the end of Jeff Davis, right before you get to the tracks, it's really dangerous crossing that road from the Hancock Bank over to the other side, so we want to use some of that leftover money in that grant to, uh, put some signs and make some, uh, identifiable areas with the yellow lights, so it'd be a little bit safer, uh, crossing the road down there.
Mayor, I actually have some pricing that, uh, you got from Mike.
Yeah, I think that was sixty-two thirty-seven?
This is just for the, uh, are they have this in their packet?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it, it's a very, very dangerous intersection, so can I get a motion?
Are we speaking of, uh...
Motion?
Just that one, right?
Yeah, just this one.
Yep.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Have them get started on that, please. Joel?
Yes, sir.
All right, next one is, uh, we have done a purchase card policy. If y'all have had time to review it, can I get a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The next thing you'll be saying, that's being of a purchase, same as with the purchase card. Right, Keeney? Next one is amendment to the, uh, Endor Corp. LLC contract. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one is, uh, intersection improvements, Klondike and Commission, uh, road pickering.
I believe, it looks like, uh, after reading this, this is just a renewal of the contract.
Extension, yeah.
Uh, have we, uh, have, have we sent them all the purchases, I mean, last time during, uh, uh, what was it, M, MML, uh, I was asking, we had lunch with them, and I was asking, pickering, what we were holding up on, any...
I think there's some information they're waiting on from council about the conveyance of the deed from, um, Mr. Buddy Ray's property to the city.
Okay, that's where we're at on that, okay.
Can we get a motion to extend the pickering?
Motion.
Got a motion, second, anybody?
Second, sorry, sorry.
Get a hold of favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, okay. Uh, we're going table number ten?
Yes.
Number eleven, uh, so I want to also, on Jeff Davis, I want to reduce the speed limit from twenty-five down to fifteen. It's a very dangerous road coming in and out, so...
I think with all the events going on, that's a...
Yeah.
Let's reduce the speed on Jeff Davis to fifteen.
Aye, can I, uh...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one is, uh, award public works contract. Uh, the, the committee, uh, recommended the, uh, public works contract to go to H-2O. Uh, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, just want to, uh, let Joe know that, uh, we, we do appreciate the work you've done, and, and please continue the, the good work. And, uh, you know, when I see Mr. Niesel, I'll, I may put in a good word for you.
Well, I, I...
I happen to see him sitting back there, so that's why I'm giving you a hard time.
And this was not an easy decision, Mike, there was three very, very close contracts. We were very fortunate to have, uh, three good companies, uh, bidding on this particular contract, so...
Just, uh, one additional comment, Mayor, um, I have been more than pleased with the response, Tom, that I get from you guys when I have issues out there. Um, it's almost, uh, I mean, it's amazing, because, uh, nobody drags their feet when a call is made or an email is sent, and I'm eternally grateful for that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And, and I'll tell you, I called a lot of the other towns that y'all are doing business in now, and they were highly, highly, uh, recommending of y'all.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's also important to note that, uh, this, uh, contract also, it was a, a reduction, if I'm not mistaken, in costs. So, not only that, we appreciate the, uh, efficiencies y'all guys have put forth.
Well, the only thing I don't like about that is why didn't we get it cheaper last year? But anyway, that's...
I'm sure that'll be fourth government.
New mayor town, I'll take the reduction.
Yeah.
So...
Well, I just want to, on behalf of H-2O, thank all of y'all, and look forward to working with y'all and every citizen in this city.
Y'all have done a great job.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, the next one is, uh, this one's going to change, we're going to retire the K-9 dog, Chief. We're not going to replace it, we're going to retire it.
Correct. If, if we replace it, it'll be after the first of the year.
Next year, no.
Right, with some other funds that may be coming available. Uh, you should see in your packet the letter from the, uh, the specialist about the condition of the dog, and we really have no choice but to retire him and, you know, live the rest of his days with his handler.
With this handler, good.
Chief, I got a question, just out of curiosity, and maybe it's a dumb question, but when we purchase one of these, do they come fully trained for what our needs of...
Yes, we, 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 they come trained, the officer goes there and trains with them.
That's right, okay, you told me that before, all right, thank you, yeah, you refreshed my memory.
I think this one, we just, we thought it was a good dog, and it, it actually had some issues that we weren't aware of. It happens. So, can I get a motion then to retire this great K-9 dog?
Will move.
Discussion.
Um, Chief, I'd like to add in here that we just asked that you give him all the belly rubs that we can, and, and thank him for his service to the city.
Sure will.
Appreciate it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one is, uh, donation to Gulf Coast Public Safety Feed the Needy, Chief Seale.
This is an annual, uh, donation that we do, it's for the, uh, Thanksgiving and Christmas meals that we deliver to the shut-ins and the needy. They call, uh, all the law enforcement in Harrison County does it, we prepare the food together, and we deliver meals. People can call up to this Friday and put their name on the list with how many meals they need, and how we deliver those meals. And it's a budgeted item.
Oh, it is a budget item?
Yes.
Okay. Motion, we got a motion, any more discussion?
Discussion, I just, uh, making everybody aware that, you know, I do see, uh, these officers out delivering them with their families on Thanksgiving morning, and that's, that's good, because I see a lot of them bringing their young children, and that's teaching them for the future, so I commend you guys for what you do with this.
Chief, I'd like to also volunteer, if you need any help with that, let me know, I'll be more than happy to help y'all do that.
All right, thank you.
You'll probably eat it all, though, be careful.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, the next one is, uh, budget amendment for the fire department.
Uh, motion.
Got a motion and a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Um, so, that's that two-hundred-and-six-thousand that we received in insurance from the wrecked fire truck. Keeney, can you move that aside?
Yes.
Okay, good. I hate to get that new fire truck and not be able to pay for it.
We're just, uh, early, early summer, is that what we're looking at?
Chief, how much did the fire truck go up from when we got the check?
Two-hundred-and-six. Well, I don't know what it is now, but from when we wrecked the first truck, the twenty-three model, ordered it three months after we took possession of it, it had gone up two-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars.
Wow.
I, I don't have a clue what it's gone up now, but I'm...
Yeah, thanks. They're not getting cheaper then?
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman Jeffrey, uh, just a comment on that, uh, and not to steal, uh, Chief's thunder, but he stood here during the last administration and explained to us, he didn't order anything with bells and whistles, just the functionality that we need. So, it's, it's not a base model, but it's, we, we didn't go out and get color TV in it either, so...
It was actually a concern all across the United States. Uh, I saw, the Senate had a hearing on it a week or so ago. Um, lots of departments across the nation, taking up to three years for departments to get apparatus, and, uh, what they are concerned with, right now, there are only about three, um, companies, they bought everybody up. So there's about three companies that are building fire trucks, and, uh, kind of got you in a strangled hole position on it. Nature of the beast right now, until something gets done.
Thanks.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one is amendment to the library budget, uh, can I get a motion? Anybody?
Motion.
And a second, any discussion? This is an invoice that came in late.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one is the Babe Ruth Ballpark Field lighting, uh, we've got a bid here for, three bids, uh, for the replacement of the, of the, it's not the lighting, it's the, uh, electrical box and two poles. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion?
Is it, uh, is your, uh, approval with, with or without the poles? Because in there, uh, didn't I read in there, we get the quote, with the poles, and we buy them, or...
We thought we had poles, but then we, they were Crisol poles.
They can't put Crisol poles in the ground.
So we had poles, but they can't...
We're going to have to buy poles.
So this is, uh, eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Yeah.
So we got a motion, a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I don't know if we had a second, Mayor.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Oh, Weaver Electric came in the cheapest.
They did.
They did.
Yeah, they did.
But, uh, but I did see how they pulled them out, uh, on, on a couple of different quotes, so that's why I wanted to make sure when we were approving it, we were approving it with them or without.
Yeah, we thought we were going to save a little bit of money, but we were told we were not.
I'd like to may have some comments about this particular, Ryan and I were talking before the meeting, um, and look, guys, I don't know if there's anybody in this town who spent more hours on that Babe Ruth field than this person right here over the years, and we utilized it, it was functional. I'm hesitant, it's not being used right now. Um, uh, I haven't spoken with the Mayor personally, but Ryan informed me that there was some spe, maybe speculative conversation about H-2O may, maybe expanding. My only question, I'm looking at both sides of the issue, I know we have a practice field availability issue in this town, come baseball season, everybody's fighting, uh, for, for, you know, a place to, to practice, so I don't know if, I don't, I don't know if it's a feasible expenditure, but I don't know if we can afford to do without it, it's kind of, you know, I'm perplexed by it.
I agree with you, if we knew what the county was going to do, and when the softball fields would actually open for the new girls out there, it would help make this decision, because that would give us four fields out off Klondike Road.
But I will tell you this factually, okay, that base Babe Ruth field is, uh, if I recall, two-hundred-and-seventy-foot fences, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Frankie may correct me, but uh, the thing is, there is no more thirteen-through-fifteen-year-old ball players, other than high school in this town anymore, it's changed, they all have gone...
I will say, just, and I don't want to, the Little League baseball, I think last year had like over two-hundred kids more than the previous year.
Right, but...
So we went from having leagues of like four and five teams, uh, age group, to having like ten and twelve.
And we have increased in registration numbers, but my point is, I think it would be feasible, if we're going to make this expenditure, we divide that field and make it two smaller fields, so that the younger kids who are registering to play baseball can utilize that complex, um, because there's no thirteen-through-fifteen anymore. Um, so if we're going to spend this money, I think we need to make the best use out of it.
I think you, and I don't disagree, but I think you may see, uh, in the future, they might be able to do some thirteen, fourteen, I mean, I know that, actually, they are doing the, they are doing a Babe Ruth, uh, I think it's going to get bigger. It's, it's gr, I mean, there's, look, because my oldest is thirteen, when he was like seven and eight, there was like five teams. My youngest is, Coach Pitch T-ball, there's twelve teams of twelve kids.
And not to be argumentative, uh, Alderman Bennett, but we already have a Babe Ruth field at the county site out there, do we need two? No, we went, we have gone from ten teams at that age group now to maybe one to two.
Yeah.
Ryan, is that, is that accurate, Ryan? Is that accurate?
I don't, I don't know the numbers on the Facebook.
Yeah, it's a lot, and my thing is just practice fields in general, like, there's nowhere to practice. Well, right now, those fields can be used in the daylight, we just don't run the Well, right now, those fields can be used in the daylight, we just don't run the lights at night, so if that's not-
The only problem with not-
Same thought I had, that we talked about it.
Probably with not getting the disconnect backed up is we've lost lights to the-
Yeah, and we had a little discussion on that too.
Over there.
Yeah.
Ryan, what's your recommendation? What's your opinion?
My opinion is I like the field. I'd like to see it fixed.
And you're saying those poles in front of concession stand are fixing to drop? They're rotten.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
One of the west is, if a kid walked up, I think he could push it over right now.
Somebody would practice there every night. You'd have, you'd have multiple teams that would use that with lights every single night.
Well, I hope if we do this, it, that is the fa- that is gonna be the truth, because I hate to spend that money and, and they just sit there.
If you do do it, the lights would still be used for however you would, if you moved H two O over there, they would still have-
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, that, that may be where we go in the future, but it's not gonna be anytime real soon.
Can I?
We could use a multi-use locker, could go out there too, and football too. So I, I'll make a motion, we approve the expenditure.
I, I, I think we have that, but just to add one other view of discussion for when it comes down to the money. Being that this is still considered the downtown area, can we, and we used, uh, we had money-
Parks and rec-
For parks and recreation, can we not use some of that grant money?
We still have money in the infrastructure improvement funds.
Can we, instead of our general fund, can we?
Yeah, we have about fifty thousand dollars left in the first infusion and then five hundred thousand dollars in the second one.
Yeah. And that's that-
No brainer.
Does that relieve your, your thoughts there?
Well, you, you certainly.
And I'll just, like, for example, we practice at Magnolia Park, which is great, but you could have three Little League teams practicing on the Bay Ruth field at one time.
I'll call, I'll call for the vote.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one is to amend the holiday schedule, can I get a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Couple of meetings ago, we brought up about changing the time of uh, one of our meetings. Is this an appropriate time to put that, or this is just closure? No, okay.
Days off.
That's all I needed, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one is personnel, city clerks.
Your, your office.
Mayor's office. The only thing I've got to add in the mayor's office is uh, as everybody's probably aware, hopefully, uh, Aldi will open December eleventh. So that's a badly needed grocery store that will bring revenues back into the city. And that's really all I got.
And also, in the mayor's office today is the mayor's birthday, we're gonna whip him before he leaves here.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine and hold it. Thank you. Alright, so next one is uh, city clerk's office, uh-
Personnel.
Do we want it, yeah, but we're going to separate, are we gonna?
Nope. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session regarding, I have several questions, uh, I guess legal questions regarding personnel and, and personnel questions.
Alright, so we got a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
We got a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Steve, can you come back here with us? Alright.
Yeah.
Motion to come out?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to come out of executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, no action taken?
Um-
Uh, the next one is uh, personnel. Can I have a motion in that personnel?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will uh, make a motion that we approve all except the one uh, step increase under the fire department. We'll table that one for next meeting.
Okay, we got, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one is, uh, got anything on the fire department, Griff?
No, sir, we did it.
Police department?
No, sir, thank you.
Engineering, master, transportation, transportation master plan.
You didn't do the-
Mr. Mayor's-
I didn't do what?
City clerks.
Revenue expense report for October.
The revenue expense report.
Okay, oh, that's right, uh, you.
We need a motion.
Go ahead, alright.
I'll make the motion.
We got a motion, and that's on the revenue expense report. Okay, we got a motion, we need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I do have some questions, but it's gonna be tomorrow.
Okay.
Next one, uh, we did the fire department, are you good?
Engineering.
You, you good? Okay. Fire department, police department, engineering, transportation master plan. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, discussion. So we're extending this date again?
Yes, sir.
I thought we were close to being, is this a second extension?
I'm not sure if, I, it prob- it may be.
Maybe more than the second.
Well, I don't know if it's more than the second, but we're, you know, we are near.
So what's the, what's the holdup on this? What's, why we keep extending it?
We're, we are very near. We've got, we've done a pretty healthy review internally, where I think our, we're kinda getting close to the time. We want to sit down with you guys, work session, because this is part of the ADA transition plans included in this. And there's some healthy discussions that's gonna be needed. So we're, we're getting close.
No additional calls?
No additional calls.
Okay. Can I have, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one is the Pineville uh, road sidewalk phase two.
Motion.
Second.
Second, discussion.
David, these are, on both of these, we're just holding off due to the city putting, uh?
That, that's right, you've, you've already spent some money, so what we're doing is we're just holding the, we're, we're not spending money on this.
Okay.
But we're keeping the contract active, but that way the city doesn't lose the investment that you've made in terms of how M dot will account for that.
Got it. So that, but that doesn't put us in any jeopardy of losing the M dot money?
That's correct.
Okay, making sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next one is uh, Pineville Road Si- Pineville Road Sidewalk Phase Three.
Uh, motion, same issue here.
Any discussion, yes, and so uh, like we said, there, those, uh, the cost is coming in very, very high. That comes out of our pockets, not the grant, so that's why we're putting this on hold until we get a better understanding. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Minor emergency service term bid contract extension. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, uh-
Uh, wait a minute, we gotta get, we ain't even had a discussion yet.
Well, I was gonna, yeah.
So, we got a motion?
Second.
He's not seconding it. Alright, is there not a second?
Second.
Alright, now we got a second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think what I'd like to do is make an alternative motion that we approve this contract for three to six months. And, and here's why. This, this original contract, uh, and I, I talked to David about this, they haven't had any problems with them, but this original contract was 2022. I think it's time that we, and it's up, they haven't had any problems with our contractor, but, I mean, we've bid out everything else. I think, I think it's time to rebid this back.
And I agree, me and Donald spoke on this too.
So, I, I don't know what kinda timeframe we need, so do we approve this?
Ninety days sufficient to put it out?
I don't know to, to- I mean, it takes, it takes a while.
A bid process usually takes, I think, anywhere forty-five to ninety days, at least.
Six months?
We can go six months, I don't think that'd hurt.
I think we approve it for, tonight, we approve it for six months.
And I think it's under the same price or under, going under now? No price change?
They're offering to, to work under the same.
And I, I think that's great.
We may need to take into consideration that they're offering at the same price, uh-
So I, I just-
Because-
Yeah, you, and we're going for six months, I mean, they've got the chance.